Board meeting for Monday, July 15th. Can I have a roll call, please?
Baurman.
Yes, ma'am.
McKeon.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Shutra.
Here.
Swanson.
Good evening.
Tucker.
Here.
And Romansky.
Here. We'll move to item two, recognition of visitors to a board meeting. Is there anyone here wanting to speak on an item not on this evening's agenda? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Brownard Hall, 2767 Holler Trail. Thanks for letting me talk. I just wanted to brief everybody and really just show up and thank you for allowing my track commission this year. I'm the head coach of the Shakopee Track Club. We had a great year. It was very successful. We took nineteen kids to state this year. And I want to give you about a thirty-second briefing of how that went. We had a novice shooter, a young gal, that ended up number two out of the entire group of novice division, which was a pretty big remarkable thing considering there were six hundred novice kids shooting. Our JV division on Saturday, we had one young man that shot his very first perfect score Saturday morning, which was a celebration all by itself. He ended up tying for ninth out of eight hundred and some kids. And on Sunday, we had four varsity classified students that shot on Sunday with sideways rain from the second we woke up until we went to bed that night. Had one tied for fourteenth, and we had two tied for twentieth. And that was out of nine hundred and eighty kids on Sunday. So just wanted to take it up and thank you guys for allowing it to happen. It was much more rewarding than I ever thought it was going to be. And I've learned to learn every next year. So that was a process.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you. And also, we have some students here tonight for state recognition.
I will take over. Just can't use out the ankle surgery and complications from that. Looks like we had a real successful spring in our activities. We had a number of people participate in boys tennis. We had Rajah Rul and Jackson Allen make the state to the Constellation semifinals. Boys track, we had Alex Dennis from the Shakopee, placed tenth. Jake Myers, the triple jump. And in girls track, we had Winona Rachel compete in the hundred meter. And Tess Miskin in the eight hundred meter and sixteen hundred meter. She placed second. Was in second place. And then, namely, we all have heard many times, Maria Hauger was fourth in the sixteen hundred meters and the thirty-two hundred meter state champion. And with us this evening is Alex Schmidt. I'm going to have her stand up. She was, has participated in three straight golf tournaments, and this year she finished fourth in her senior season. So we'd like to give her a welcome.
Marie was here so often, we were considering making her a board member. She's been coming here since she was a junior high at East State or competing in state. I'd like to congratulate Alex. Any other students here tonight?
I don't believe so.
Congratulations. Thanks for doing these proud.
You don't have to stay for the whole board meeting?
Unless you want to stay till ten o'clock tonight? I also want to make an announcement that the board is returning from a 5:30 closed session. The closed session was held under Minnesota statute 13D-05 for communication to develop or consider offers or counteroffers for the purchase or sale of real or personal property. The properties are Munnen's, Merrick, Farmer, O'Brien, Doherty, Anderson, and Joe Ties. And then we can move on to consideration of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions?
Nope.
Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion will carry. Then we'll move on to item four, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve consent?
No.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, then motion will carry. Did you want to go in order?
Yeah, that'd be great to start with number five there.
Okay, we have a welcome and introduction for our new administration. I think we're going to have to have people wear name badges for a while.
I think you're right, Mary. And we want to welcome our group of new administrators to the district. And we actually will have a couple of them that are at the Avid Conference in Texas that'll be connecting with us via FaceTime. But let's just take them down the list. I've asked each person if they would be willing just to share a little bit with the board, come on up and share a little bit about themselves. So the first person I would like to come up, our new director of teaching and learning, Nancy Tool. Nancy?
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Nancy Tool. Now, Matt, I connected the dots. He gave me the water from the interview. And when I saw him earlier, I met so many people today, it was hard to keep everyone straight. But I was born and raised in northern Iowa, so sometimes I like to tease Minnesotans that I come here to do my mission work.
That's a no.
But actually, I've been fortunate to work in education in three different states. I actually started teaching social studies in Nebraska. And then also worked in Iowa for a number of years before coming to the metro and working in St. Louis Park in Minnetonka, and as well as the last fifteen years in Eastern Carver County Schools in Chaska and Janice. So it's been a great day. Everyone has been so welcoming. I live actually on a small acreage because I was a farm girl. We needed a little bit of land, small acreage just west of Waconia. Have two sons that are in their teenage years and are enjoying that. So I'm glad to be here, rented at home and all of those kinds of things. No, but just really looking forward to being part of the team. And met everyone today, and everyone has been so welcoming. So looking forward to it.
Thanks, Nancy.
Welcome.
Our next person up is our communications coordinator, Kristal McNally.
Hello. This is also my first day today, my first time at McNally. I originally grew up in Woodbury. Graduated there, went to the University of Minnesota Morris in double major of communications and history. The day I graduated, I started at KTC, which is a television station in Rochester. I was a reporter and anchor there. And then I moved to northern Michigan to be a anchor, main anchor at the CBS station there in the five, six, and eleven. I still get nervous around people, it's on cameras. And, you know, I was looking for something that was more family friendly. It's really hard to be away from my family at night. So this job came, and I think it's the perfect fit for me. And so I'm looking forward to taking all my skills I learned in TV and applying it to Shakopee schools. I have a husband who will be working at the high school in math, he's a math teacher and a job that's going to be two. So I'm very excited to be here. Thank you for offering all of these so much.
Thank you, Kristal. Is, oh, there is Angela. And a face that you probably recognize. One of the things that I always get excited about is when our internal people, our internal candidates, compete against a big pool of externals and they rise to the top. And so, welcome Angela Turri.
I'm Angela. And I know you've met Melissa before. I have been in Shakopee. This will be my sixth year in Shakopee. I taught first and second grade. I went to elementary for four years and then spent one year half-time dean, half-time teacher there, and then was the dean at Pearson Miss last year. And so I got to be part of the new sixth grades center opening last year and got to work alongside Dave Berlowski and have a really good teammate in him all year. And so I'm really excited to be there this next year and be in the principal role. And I just have loved my time in Shakopee, and I'm so thankful that I got to stay here and continue my career here. And I'm just really excited to be back and have your two at Pearson Miss grades center. I think I was a really big hit this year. Families loved it, teachers were excited, and students are right here. So keep that going there.
Very good. Thank you, Angela. Sarah, are we good to go with?
I'm ready.
All right. So we're going to test out our technology here. We have, the next person up would be Shakopee East Junior High Principal, Jim McClositch. Are we?
We're following.
Okay. That's not quite Jim.
I didn't know if I was looking for laughs the first thing that you, when you saw my face.
Well, JP, we are in the process of introducing to our community our principal, our new principal. So I'm hoping Jim is in the room with you.
Jim is in the room with me, and I'm going to go ahead and move the computer over so he can, he can be on FaceTime.
Very good. And what we're looking for, welcome, Jim. We're looking for a short introduction. So welcome is our new Shakopee East Junior High Principal.
Thank you very much, Dr. Thompson, members of the board. Let me just say it's an honor to be in Shakopee, even though JP decided that he'd, he had rank on me, so he got to be on camera first. You know, we're not going to debate who's more handsome here. But a little bit about me, spent the last seventeen years in North St. Paul. I spent thirteen years as a classroom teacher. Loved every minute of it. And for the last four years, I've been the principal at Richardson Elementary School, also in North St. Paul. Had some great gains in student achievement there, over ten, twelve percent in math on the MCAs, another seven percent in reading. You know, things I'm really, you know, proud of doing. You know, at this point, I'm just excited to get the opportunity to come to Shakopee, a growing community, you know, two great junior highs, and just really excited to be a part of the team. And it's been fun to have the opportunity this week to be in San Antonio and get to meet some of my teachers and some of the other staff here in Shakopee.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Do you want to introduce the new principal? Okay. Our next person that we're going to welcome and introduce is our learning, our Learning Center Principal, Eric Service. Eric?
Good evening. As you know, my name is Eric Service. I'm excited to be here in the Shakopee District, particularly at the Takata Learning Center. I'm coming from the Parle Lake Savage School District, where I spent the last thirteen years in the public education system. I spent eight years in the high school classroom teaching social studies before moving into a professional development role, and then most recently, building leadership role as a dean of students. And so I'm excited to have the opportunity to take the next step. But I'm especially excited to be at the Takata Learning Center and help lead that program that's in its infancy and develop it into something that can be a model for the state. And so I appreciate the opportunity and I'm excited to be here.
Thank you. Welcome. And last but not least, on our welcome, the buildings, our new buildings and grounds manager, Tim Reback.
Good evening. Thanks for taking the time. Tim Reback, I actually am in my twenty-seventh year in education. Started in technology, moved into operations, and have spent time in New Prague, twenty-four years, and Elk River, two and a half years. Really enjoy the building process, enjoy the custodians, enjoy that whole process. I've enjoyed it immensely, and I thank you very much for the opportunity. I have three grown kids, all out and all out of school, all contributing to society. Four grand. Four grandkids that I get to spoil and definitely paybacks to my children that are grand, my grandchildren. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm very excited to be here and look forward to helping in any way, shape, or form I can.
Welcome. Thank you. So I think since we have JP online, we'll look at the organizational structure, and I'd be happy to tee that one up.
Okay. We're going to skip a little bit and go to, actually, it's six point one, instructional technology.
Okay, I'll tee that one up. We have JP Jacobson. JP's our new director of instructional technology. And JP, JP met with Dr. Bezek, myself, and the executive board and shared with the draft of an organizational structure that came through the Heartland research and looked at job descriptions postings and spent some time with JP looking at what makes sense to his structure. And so because JP needs to get his postings out for the summer, he is going to share that with you. And it is an action item, old business, because we have had technology coming forward a number of times. So JP, do you want to share with us? I see the board members have their org charts out. Do you want to share with us? They've had a chance to obviously look at it. So do you want to tee that up? And then maybe we'll look at any questions that they might have for you.
Yes, perfect. Thank you, Rod, for kind of peeing it up like that. You know, maybe just, maybe to begin, I just want to talk a little bit about just that kind of the overall framework of the department and how it might change going forward based on this new proposed org chart. And I want to begin by saying that I certainly can't boast that I, that I came up with this all by myself on a napkin anyplace. It was, we really used a lot of input and some guidance that was given to us by the Heartland group and have done this in other districts elsewhere. So, but going forward, what we really want to do is we, as you know already, is we want to move the technology department under the umbrella of teaching and learning. And we really want to look at our department, the people in our departments, really kind of in two different spheres, so to speak. The first one I would call our front end, our learning, our service, our service learning group of teachers. And that would be those people in that tech, technology integration box, and those would be people who would be the, you know, the faces of our department. They would be the people on, teachers on special assignments that would be doing things like doing walkthroughs with me, doing technology coaching with teachers so that we are using technology just not to, not only to integrate technology into classrooms, but instead to make sure that we're using technology to increase student engagement or increase student levels of thinking, these sorts of things. They're going to be doing things like staff development with teachers. They're going to be going and bringing ideas that they might get at conferences or on blogs that they read or different social groups that they're involved in and bringing it back. And I would see myself meeting with that group of teachers on a regular basis and having dialogue about new and emerging ideas for technology integration in classrooms that we can support on our backend with our infrastructure. That would be really kind of a think tank, a group of people that would help get traction with technology and teaching and learning in our district. And then I see us having kind of a backend, behind-the-scenes sort of group of people that would support everything that we want to do with technology in our district. And that would start with a productivity desk. Working at that productivity desk would be essentially four people that would respond to the majority of the help desk tickets in our district when smart boards aren't operating the way we want them to, or we're having problems with iPads or desktop computers. They would be, they would be overseeing all of that. We would also have somebody that would be our business analyst. And that would be what we would foresee that person understanding all of our web-based products or tools that we use in our district, all of our software tools, anything, our exchange, our email server, all of those, those different parts of our district, our service model for IT. They would understand how that operates on our, on our infrastructure and our system. And they would be the primary person responsible for staff development in that regard, teaching teachers how to use our website, teaching teachers how to use our student information system, that being Infinite Campus. And then also understanding what is new and emerging in, in the area, in that, in their area. New, there might be, they might understand what's happening in terms of data collection tools that we can use to get formative and summative assessment data back in the hands of teachers real quickly. Or other, other tools that we might want to talk about that we could bring back to our entire IT department to determine whether they're going to get, they're going to, we're going to benefit from possibly using them. And then I, then I see us having one last person in that department, and that would be a network management person. That would be a person that understands everything that's in the walls, everything that's in the closets and in the ground. And they would be responding to help desk tickets when our network went down, or they'd be really providing a lot of input for our team when we're talking about making changes to our infrastructure and whether our network can support that. So we really have, like I said, our front end group, that would be our teachers on special assignment, doing staff development and monitoring what's happening actually in our classroom with our end users, those being our teachers and our kids. And then our backend support model. And so I really would see that our project manager and our network management person would be people that would be on a peer sort of level. They would see each other as peers. And we would probably have one person in that group that would serve as the, be the lead or the supervisor of that group that would understand everything that's happening in regards to technology in each of those boxes, whether it comes to our productivity desk, our project management, and our network management. That person would, would understand all of that and be, they would supervise that. They wouldn't, they wouldn't necessarily manage a budget or hire people on their own, but they would, they would be our lead technology backend person. And that would probably be our productivity desk manager. So that's the model that we were looking at and for our department and, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions if you have them.
JP, just, I know the board is, has spent numerous time, times talking about how you're able to pay for these people. And so I thought it'd be important, just for those folks who might be at home or, or watching this later on our channel. We have had a restructure which allows for, in, out in the world of teaching and learning and special services, we had a need for some of our folks, five in particular, to help with the technology needs and some of the special ed services that come along with those technology needs. That freed up, that became part of a fiscal responsibility then through Scott Hare and his department. That freed up dollars to put into this restructure. We also had a resignation of, of an employee over the last month that added additional dollars. So JP was asked to take this pool that was available to him, structure it based on best practice and what other innovative best practice districts are doing, listen and work with Heartland, our consultants, which he did, and this is the model he came back with. One of the things that I, that we challenged him on was, can you make sure that this isn't adding additional dollars? And he's done that. So that was important for someone who might be seeing, you know, a posting come out for five or six, seven positions. Those are left with vacancies for people who have gone to other departments or people who have resigned and went a different, different path. So with that, though, are there any questions from board members for JP? My recommendation is going to be to approve this structure, which then triggers his ability to post those positions ASAP.
I just have one question, JP, and that is, you indicate the productivity desk having a manager and for all intents and purposes, the project management, network management folks, as well as the analysts, being a direct report of that manager. Is there any reason why all of those folks couldn't be direct reports of yours?
That's a great question. The reason for that is, is I understand that my, my background and expertise is going to be on the teaching end of all this. And so I'm going to be, I'm going to need to really trust one particular person that when I need to make a phone call about what's happening in our district, about something going down or something not operating the, the way they want it, that we want it to, that I can call that person and they can give me an idea of what's happening if I happen to be over, for example, over at Eagle in a classroom, or if I might be at the high school. I can call that person and they're going to just be able to articulate who's working on it, what's happening, these sorts of things. Also, for example, this weekend, in my absence when I'm down in Texas, it's nice to have one person who can kind of oversee what's happening, the projects that's happening in that department, and, and make sure that work, work is getting done and we're getting out to our help desk tickets the way we want to, and that we're, we are, we are completing projects in a timely manner. And so that person isn't necessarily going to be on a day-to-day basis directing these people, but when, when, when we need to have a go-to person on the backend side of our network and I might not be around, that would be that particular person.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion will carry. Thank you, JP.
Thank you, JP.
Thank you.
Have a nice time in Texas.
Thank you.
Go to new business discussion items, or did you just want to take seven point one and just?
Because it's, because I know that it's John that's doing it, let's delay John until the end. Does that make sense? That come out wrong, but.
We don't have somebody else.
Mr. Jenke's not here to present this evening.
Okay. So we'll go to seven point two for our demographic and enrollment projection report from Hazel Reinhardt.
Very good. Well, one of, one of the things, as Hazel's coming up, I think I visited with several of the board members, you know, we've had this facilities task force or facilities group that's been out there a number of years, and tonight seems like tonight's the night. Tonight's the night that we get the results both from Hazel and Bill and Peter. And we've been very much looking forward to the results, and so welcome to Shakopee and thanks for working with us.
Well, thank you very much. It's my pleasure to be here. This is the third time in, well, in ten years, and I think maybe it's the fourth time overall. And so again, thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, superintendent. I have a short presentation. Well, nothing is ever short with me because I get a pocket tip here. I'd like to go through sort of an executive summary that will provide, I hope, a good overview of what has happened here and what we then see coming in the next ten years. As you all know, this is a district that has had very, very rapid enrollment growth, and you can see those stunning numbers of 2,597 students in ten years at almost fifty-four percent, which is a very, very rapid growth. During the same period of time, the district's school age population increased by about 3,400 students, or about 60 percent. And your resident enrollment, now, preface is you do not have a very high percentage of non-resident students, but your resident enrollment increased by about 58 percent. And when I look at your capture, the public schools' capture rate of, of that pool of eligible students who are enrolled in school, you're capturing about 80 percent of them, which is pretty typical of a twin-city suburban district. If you want to think about the other options that students have, in this district, a slightly higher-than-average number of students and percentage of students attend are in non-public settings, meaning Brooks and more non-public schools or in home schools. And the percentage of students selecting or opting for other public options is lower than average. So you don't lose the same percentage of students to other public options as many districts do. Non-residents make up only 2.5 percent of your total enrollment, which is, is low compared to a lot of other districts. And I assume it's low because you probably don't have a lot of room. I made four cohort projections. They all show total enrollment increasing over the next ten years. The highest of these projections shows enrollment increasing by more than 2,000 students, nearly 28 percent. And just to, you know, put a little damper on this, this is only about half the rate of increase that you've experienced. It's still a kind of a breathtaking rate of growth. The two lowest projections show a decline in K5, not dramatic, but a small decline. And you asked, why would that happen? Well, it's because district resident births softened after 2007 due to the lower birth rates of the recession years, but it's really rebounded since then to the pre-recession levels. Now, the, I think it's almost impossible to sort of dodge that bullet. I think you will see that, especially in the kindergarten class of 2015, '16. I think you will see that. Now, on the other side of the equation, this announcement of 500 new jobs in Shakopee may bring about enough change that you'll get some softening of this trend, you know, that you'll get people who will move with preschool kids. Now, we all know that not all 500 of those jobs will be, people will be living in Shakopee, but it really is a significant event to have occurred, you know, and I don't think it should be in any way discounted or minimized. And the other thing that's really important to remember... to remember is that the size of your current grades, that is, larger elementary grades than middle school grades, larger middle school grades than high school grades, creates a structural growth momentum that really keeps on driving the enrollment of the middle school and high school for the next 10 years, because you've got the kids here, and they are, the lower grades have many more kids per grade, and so they will come move through, and those middle school and high school enrollments will just continue to increase. Also remember that in 10 years, all but two high school grades, if you are on a 9-12 configuration, are already in school. So we're not making assumptions about who's going to be born or anything like that. They're already here, we're just watching them come through. I have here the numbers of your K12 total enrollment. You can admire those numbers, going from 4814 to 7411, a pretty dramatic increase. One of the things that demographers especially like to look at is, we like to understand what's driving change. And there are basically two simple concepts. In the population as a whole, are there more births than deaths, and do more people move in than move out? And in the school enrollment, is are there more kindergarten students than the previous year's grade 12? That's a form of natural increased decrease. And then the net migration, do you get more children every year than you would have expected? That is, the mortality rate for school-aged children is very, very low. So we would, if we have 500, let's say, first graders, we would expect to have 500 second graders the following year. And if we have 530 or 540, we know we have net in-migration. We don't know that, you know, can't, this is not a way, we're not matching student numbers, we're just looking at the aggregate and the change. And what this, these numbers tell us, well, first of all, we can see that the rate of growth, the numbers and the rate of growth was much faster 10 years ago than it has been recently. However, we know since 2007, we have had a recession, and while it is technically over, the, we're only now in 2012 really seeing the pickup in the housing market and the pickup in employment. So it's taken a long time to rebound. As you can see under the natural increase-decrease column, that's the difference in the size of the kindergarten class from the previous year's grade 12. So when you have numbers of this magnitude, it's almost impossible not to have growth. And then you add to that the estimate of the net migration, that is, people who have moved into the district in net school-aged kids. And again, you'll see that the numbers were larger pre the recession, they were smaller, and I'm told that 2009, 10, something to do with some subsidy of housing units that came online and stimulated. So we can see how sensitive these numbers are to changes in the housing stock. And then this past year was a very tiny number, actually, but we had a huge, still had a huge natural increase. So we have both natural increase and net migration driving your growth. Here I'm showing you a comparison of where you stand versus the state as a whole for education choices. And this is for the year 2011, '12, state Minnesota has chosen, for whatever reason, not to be getting the 2012, '13 numbers posted. But 8.1% of enrolled students are in traditional non-public schools, and 1.9% in homeschools. And you can see you're at 9.5 for the traditional schools, 1.2 for the homeschool. If we look at public options, 6.4% of Minnesota students choose open enrollment, or some of it might be tuition, but open enrollment, basically. And you can see here that you have about 2.4 in and 5.4 out. So you're a net loser, but nowhere near kind of the fall that occurs statewide. And there are districts, for example, that will have 30, 33% of their students are non-residents, so you can have some huge numbers. And then you can see statewide, your capture rate is a little higher than the statewide average. However, as I said, your capture rate is pretty typical of the metro area, suburban. Here's enrollment by grade for 10 years, and I tend to do two things when I look at these numbers. One, I look at that kindergarten number across the row to see what's happened with kindergarten. And you can see that the 2009, 10 kindergarten was the largest you've had thus far. Then you had a low year for, sometimes things happen for reasons we can never quite identify. And then we've had some rebounding in the kindergarten class size. If you come down to the grade 12, you can see that your grade 12 is ever increasing in size. If we look down the 2012, '13 column, it becomes very, very clear how much larger those elementary grades are compared to the high school grades. I mean, you can just see it so easily with the naked eye. And then if you see, if you want to calculate migration, you go from that kindergarten of 2003, '04 at 418. It had 447 students in grade 1, 441, grade 2, 451, 460, 467, 462, 485, 482, and 519 at grade 9. And the reason that we get such a large bump at grade 9 is that your relatively large non-public enrollment, a very high proportion of those make the decision to join the Shakopee public schools at grade 9. So you can see how that works. And here, just to help you see, I did the average class size. Now here, I'm kind of anticipating where you're going here, at K5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. So the average class has 625 elementary, 574 at the middle school, and 485 at the high school. Now, with that background, we're faced with the challenge of making enrollment projections. And one of the first things we have to do is make some kindergarten projections. And kindergarten is very, very important for long-term projections, especially 10 years, is because those students are most likely to be with you the entire 10-year period. So it becomes very, very, very crucial to the projection. We have here a column that says district pool. And by that, those numbers represent the births that have been geocoded to the addresses in this district. So these are children whose mothers were residents of this district in the year of these births. We call it a pool because we have adjusted it for September 1st through August 31st, so we had them kindergarten-age eligible, as opposed to a calendar year. And approximately one-third of the births are from September through December. Now, what one sees with that pool, of course, is how it has increased in size. And then, if you'll recall, I talked about that softening of the birth rate. And you can see the pool for, it would be one-third of 2006 births and 2000, two-thirds of 2007 births was 824, and that was the pool for the kindergarten class of 2012, '13. And now you can see that the softening of the births, we have some decline. And then I want to call your attention, because we've got to be mindful of this, of that 2009, 10, it's at 565. But look how it has rebounded. Now, I can tell you that in many districts I have worked with in the last four or five months, births have not rebounded. So this has been a very strong rebound, back essentially to kind of the pre-recession numbers. And I would expect that they will continue to rebound and will get some growth. Under the percentage column, I'm looking for a way, and I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about alternatives here, but I've looked for a way of calculating, of projecting, estimating the number of births to anticipate in as simple a way as possible. There are lots of theoretical ways to do things, but they become very difficult to actually execute, and you have to make so many assumptions that by the time you're finished, you say, no, let's not. So this is really pretty simple. It says, if I can get my pool, and I have confidence that pool is aligned correctly, what percentage was the kindergarten class of that pool of available students? And then how stable are those percentages, and what kind of confidence can we have of that moving forward? Well, when we look at these percentages, we're seeing exactly what we would anticipate, because that kindergarten class of 2003, '04 is much larger than the pool. And we would expect that, because Shakopee is growing rapidly, and that kindergarten had many more students made up of people who moved to this district while those children were preschoolers or at the first grade. They were, in other words, they were not born here. But as the growth, population growth of the district kept on accelerating, we can see it went from 124, 125, 107, 112, 90, 89, 89, 78, 78, 75. So we're really catching up with a population being born here and a population entering kindergarten. So now I'm, we know, as you can look at these numbers, and you can see that these move around a little bit. Actually, the last three years have been very, very stable. And even in the last five to six, reasonably good, that range of movement is fairly typical. However, I don't want to reach back so far in time that I'm picking up that 124 or 25%. You see what I'm saying? So I also know that if I average some of these percentages, I have a better chance of getting something that fits going forward than picking a single year, because there is this annual fluctuation. So what I have done here is I have taken an average of the past three years, and then an average of the past five. We'll see that, we'll pick that up, but hold that point in mind. What I have here is just some, something to put our heads in, in the right place for the coming 10 years. One, the population is getting older. And that's more than just you and me getting a year older. The whole median age of the population is shifting up, and we're all going to be middle-aged pretty soon and older. The implications of that is that there's less geographic mobility, because older people move less frequently than young people. There's going to be a decrease in school age population per household, and probably the implication for you is that you have to run the bus around a little more. For recreation, or for your own children's playtime, it's why we make playdates, because our neighborhoods don't have enough density of kids anymore. Like, when you were young, you could just go outside and every house had a kid. And then we have a significant shift in the size of adult age groups, and our younger age group is not as large or growing as fast as it did in the past decade. So there's some who argue that it may lessen the demand for single-family detached housing, and we're going to see more units, different units. And the significance of that is that single-family detached units overwhelmingly everywhere produce the highest yield of school-aged kids. Now, why am I so confident that births will continue to go up? Well, we know sitting out there is this large Gen Y population, or millennials, as they're called, and they have not come into their prime childbearing years. And we know that somewhere 2015, 2017, all the way to about 2027, they will be in the prime childbearing years. And of course, we're having children later, so it probably is going to take them until they're 25, 26, 27, 30, before we see the full impact of this. That tells us that we can be very confident that births are going to rise in those years, at the end of our projection period and beyond. And that will produce another enrollment cycle, the third cycle, where we will have it, we will have it start out with rising elementary enrollments, and then, you know, elementary goes down, and the high school enrollments start to increase. And we believe that we will see another large graduating class sometime after 2040. We had the first big one in 1978, when the boomers not, has not been surpassed. The second one was 2009 statewide. Now, we would expect another one somewhere in that 2040. So we're looking, what I'm trying to say is, whatever we see happening now, we can't get too focused, because we know if we keep our eye on that ball, we know there are numbers that are going to be occurring in the future. Now, here are the capture rates that I chose. I chose averaging the past three years, which is at 77.6, past six years at 82.7. And I chose that low percentage for the low assumption, and the higher percentage for the high assumption. And I'm applying those against what you saw were the pools. Now, the wringer in all of this is all-day kindergarten. Okay? And when I look at your data, I, it's hard to say what, quite to expect. One of the things I always look at is, what percentage inflow do you have between kindergarten and grade 1? Because we know that much of that is a result of children attending some private school or daycare center, because the public school didn't have all-day kindergarten. But that number in your case is not that huge. However, when we go to the state data and look for where your residents are, we see a large number of Shakopee district residents attending kindergarten in surrounding schools, which would suggest that the number could be much larger than we see by simply the movement of students. So since we last talked, superintendent, I've been muddling this around in my head, and I think you're going to see more kids than I thought you were going to see.
Okay.
Okay. And I will even be so bold and tell you, I will make you a set of free projections after the fall of 2013, if that number is large. Okay?
All right.
Now, here, we're taking those kindergarten assumptions of the 77.6 and the 82.7, and I'm applying them against those pools. And at the end, I have to project the pool from projected births for Scott County. But you can see, we had 624 kindergarten students, and you see that we saw that the pool was going down because of the lower birth rate. So we see that here in the kindergarten numbers. Reaching its low in the kindergarten of 2017, '18, and then we start to see it go up. Okay? And I'm showing you the total number there, because I always like to check to see how many kindergarten students did you have over the past ten years. And you can, now we get a sense of how this projection is performing against the past. And so I would expect the number to go up. This is just, there's nothing unusual in this, but we can see the magnitude of it. Now, the other challenge I had is to make some assumptions about how many students are going to be moving into this district. And here, we're looking at the configuration that you have currently. We have it by every grade, so we can reconfigure it however we desire. But here, we're looking at elementary as K6. And the, a couple of things really stand out here. Number one, you always have more students showing up in elementary than you would expect. So more people are constantly moving into the district with elementary school-aged kids. And there's absolutely no reason to believe that that will change, because one of the unique properties of housing in this district is that it's some of the newest housing in the metro area, because the district has developed rapidly recently. So you have a lot of new housing, and new housing is more attractive to And new housing is more attractive to families than old housing. You know, everyone says, oh, people are going to have starter homes. Oh, people don't have starter homes. They, they go for homes that meet their, their needs, their floor plan, their amenities right away. The other thing we see is that we see a large inflow at the middle school level. And that really, in, in this, is being driven by the grade nine that transfer in from the non-publics. And then you see the negative numbers at the high school. And you probably asked, why are those numbers negative? Well, it's not that these children are leaving the district, but rather, these numbers do not include the ALC and other programs. So that's where these students are, are moving, is the ALC, PSEO, the like. So now I'm going to use the same technique. I'm going to do some averaging. I'm going to try to stabilize these survival rates. The survival rate is really a way of combining both mortality and movement. And if the number is 1.000, that means we had the same number of students the following year as we had the previous. And if it's less than 1.00, then we can see what, what we have lost. So you can see across at the K to 1 line, that we're averaging about six, five to six percent increase every year. And you can see, we run an increase at 1 to 2, 2 to 3, 3 to 4. We're running the 3 to 4, look at that, it's one, you know, it's about, just shy of 2% very consistently. And then we see, of course, the, at 8 to 9, look at that, that's running really about 10% a year. So you can see how this all works. Now, what am I going to do? Well, I'm going to combine these assumptions. And here on the migration assumption, I'm making my low, the average of the past three years, and the high, the average of the past 10. And why am I going back 10 years? Because I, I really believe that the recession in housing, we're coming out of that, and we need to recapture some of the growth momentum we saw earlier. Otherwise, we're going to undershoot in the migration. We just won't get the recent past. And in the projections, what I'm looking at here is that I know my kindergarten projections make a bigger difference in the number of students than the migration is. So I know here, that's one place to shine the flashlight. Now, on these projections, I want to direct your attention to what I believe is the best projection, which is the high kindergarten assumption and the high migration assumption. And why do I think that's the best projection? Well, because of these new additional jobs in Shakopee. And that migration rates are likely to be closer to the 10-year average. Number two, births are rebounding, and kindergarten is likely to be at the high assumption levels. Okay? And then the past track record. As I said, I have made projections here for a number of years, and actual enrollment has been closest to the highest projections. And I'm going to show you there the actual column in bold. You see my 2002 projection. And, well, let's see, we were, we were about okay until 2006, '07, and then you see the projection, actual enrollment started to really outpace the projection. Then in 2010, I made another set of projections, and notice the difference is one student between the actual and the base of that projection here. But notice that by the time I'm at 2012-13, it's just luckily close to the actual. So again, always the highest projection has come in closest to where reality is. Which, of course, I said, you know, maybe in the desire to get a lower projection, it was never realistic to really think it was going to be a lower one. But anyway, that's why I would direct you to the highest projection. And this is what the highest projection looks like. Reports show others, but I think, you know, we don't want to spend our time. I really feel strongly about this. So you can see in 2022-23, projecting 9,450 students in Shakopee public schools. I hear, I hear some sighing going on. And then when I take these, this projection, and I'm looking at where I think you're going to be going as a K-5, 6, 8, 9, 12. And I'm showing you the top line in bold where we are in 2012-13, then five years out, 17, 18. And then the 10 years out at 22, 23. And here you can see that K-5 is going up throughout the period, but, but in the first five years, it's, it's not a large increase. You'll notice that 6, 8 is going up. And then, if you notice, it drops a little bit in the second five years of the projection, because we have slid down this slightly more modest elementary. See, they have aged being into middle school, and now we have a little dip in that. And then look what happens to the high school from 1900 to 3,112. And those high school numbers are the numbers that really, we have the greatest confidence in, because these kids are born. They're already there, they're here. Okay? And then, my estimate is that there are 17,000 total dwelling units in this district, of which 9,166 are single-family detached. That's what the Scott County property tax records say. At this point, 184 single-family detached units are projected to be built. And that's without Prior Lake portion of the district, because the city of Prior Lake says, yes, they expect units to be built, but they haven't got sewer water, they don't have it platted yet. And so I didn't know whether we should count them for 2016 or not. Sometimes things happen quickly, sometimes they don't. The other question is that as development increases, more than 184 may come on. But that's, that's where we stand today. This district historically, when, when a unit is new and you have a new unit, the yield is not particularly high. And the reason for that is that so many people have preschool children, or children that who will be born in this district. So the effect of the new unit is not so dramatic immediately, but it has a very long tail. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have. Yes?
So just, as I'm looking at these numbers, you prefaced it by saying, you're now thinking that kindergarten, kindergarten, all that came, there'd be even greater impact?
Yes.
So these are already all the 2012?
And when, as I said, when I looked at, what I traditionally look at, I thought, well, not that dramatic. And then when we looked at the data of the number of district residents in kindergarten this past year in other adjacent districts, a lot of kids.
140 to Prior Lake?
Yeah, I think something like that, and a pretty large number to Eden Prairie as well. It's too close. So...
I think Hazel, the, the statement that you made, that maybe we were anticipating hearing, but it really hit home, is the kids that are already here give you the greatest confidence in projecting. And that is a high school class in that 22-23 of 3,100 students.
Yes.
And in perspective, that's Eden Prairie, probably just shy of Wayzetta. It's, it's in what, it's the large, top 10 in the state, 5 in the state in terms of...
Big, big high school. That's the kids.
Four high schools are large if we built 1600.
Yeah, if we build the 1500, that's full.
Yeah.
I think that's a, that's an important point too, Matt, is that as we, you know, as we talk to our community about...